Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order because it is now 7:00 PM. As we begin our evening tonight, I'll ask you to join me for a moment of silence and then a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move on to roll call. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next, we will have roll call.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Sassi.
Present.
Commissioner Knight.
Present.
Commissioner Perdue.
Present.
Commissioner Robbins.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Goy?
So moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to our first opportunity for public comment, and I'll call up our translator as well. So we have a couple opportunities for public comment tonight. The first one is specific to agenda items, and so for the first item, we'll ask you to be specific about what action item you're speaking to. And then we do have one scheduled, we have two scheduled public hearings tonight, but with the support of my colleagues, I'll take those two together because they're both related to an obsolete property rehabilitation district located at 2037 Division Avenue. So if you are here tonight to be heard on that item, I'm going to ask you to stay put until I open up that public hearing. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll have public comment for anything else that you wish to speak to us about. So I'll invite our translator to come up tonight and introduce herself. If you need assistance with translation services, please let us know. We're happy to provide that.
Hello, my name is Yolanda. I'm here to interpret for the Spanish language. Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Yolanda, y estoy aquí para interpretar en el idioma en español.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so that will take us to our first opportunity for public comment. Again, this is public comment specific to agenda items. So we asked you to come to this podium, share your name, the city that you live in. You'll be given up to three minutes to speak. And if it's not clear, if you're speaking about an agenda item, expressing your support or opposition to it for a reason, then I'm going to ask you to stay put until the end of the meeting where it's open public comment. And again, we ask you to be explicit about what item you're speaking to, and I'll open it up for public comment on agenda items only.
Evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners, staff, fellow citizens. My name is Daniel Scott, longtime resident of the city, over 30 years, and also wanted to thank quickly Police Chief Winstrom and Fire Chief Brad. Appreciate their excellent service to our city, keeping us safe in a very difficult time. Also wanted to thank all the fire department places for being willing to take in babies that may not be wanted or can't be cared for by their mothers. I'm addressing the physical, fiscal issues. There's quite a few of them when I went online. $1,700,000, I believe, for the riverbank or Riverwalk improvements, millions on the amphitheater, millions on soccer field. I could have listed several other projects dealing with park improvements. I suppose that these are, you know, nice and pretty, that we can enjoy, but I just believe it's the wrong timing to spend so much money with our nation, our state, our city drowning in debt. Think of it, federal government, over $30 trillion in debt, which, by the way, is according to scripture, evidence of God's judgment on a nation when they're that much in debt. And no wonder, because of our sins as a nation. Because of these sins, our economy is going to collapse. I hate to be a killjoy, but this cannot be sustained. That's why I believe, why not hold on to this money? Keep it for the troubles that are coming. We're no different than any other nation that has gone into debt like that in man's history. It always ends in collapse. And if you're going to give the money away or spend it, why not give it back to the citizens? They certainly, many of them certainly could use that help. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to close that public comment period. That'll take us to approval of our minutes. Commissioners, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our May 7th and May 14th meetings?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported commissioners. Any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to petitions and communications, and we have three items before us tonight.
A communication received from Patrick Karpowitz with suggested changes to the proposed residential parking permit program.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Jonathan Benedict regarding their resignation from the North Quarter Corridor Improvement Authority.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Sandro Di Mercurio requesting an appeal of a FOIA request.
And that is received and filed. All right, that will take us to our reports of city officers, and we have two items tonight.
A comptroller's warrant report for the period of April 24, 2022 through May 7, 2022, in the amount of $18,169,638.72 in small claims first quarter 2024.
That is received and filed.
A treasurer's report for period of April 24, 2024 through May 6, 2024.
And that is also received and filed. So next that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items that we voted on earlier today in one of our standing committee meetings, where there was a unanimous vote. So tonight, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Support.
All right, moved and supported commissioners. Any additional comments or questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Commissioners, we do have one item off consent. This is an item we talked about this morning that had some technical changes that needed to be made in the language based on feedback from MEDC. So this is a resolution approving a transformational brownfield plan for Grand Action 2.0 redevelopment project and approving affordable housing agreements for the residential development projects. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor, you want to tell us about this item?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, this is related to the transformational brownfield project that we've been discussing. This is related to the transformational brownfield project that we've been talking about for quite a while, which includes both the amphitheater and the soccer stadium, as well as two adjoining projects to both of them, which include both the residential housing component and a parking component. And we've talked about it and approved it this morning, but there were some minor changes related to just some of the language that needed to be cleaned up. It's a 170-page document, I believe, so there were a couple minor things that got left out, so this was just a cleanup and why it got brought back to us tonight.
Great, thank you. All right, commissioners, any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have three ordinances before us tonight.
Consideration of an ordinance rezoning 425 Pleasant Street Southwest and 535 Church Place Southwest from traditional neighborhood low-density residential zone district to special districts planning redevelopment district to facilitate construction of 20 duplex units and reuse of an existing building for office and preschool uses.
All right, can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Robbins, you want to tell us about this item?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Back on May 7, the City Commission established today, May 21, as the date to consider rezoning property on the north side of Pleasant Street Southwest from traditional neighborhood low-density residential zone district to special districts planned redevelopment district to facilitate a mixed-use affordable housing development to be constructed by Habitat for Humanity of Kent County. This subject site is part of Pleasant Hills, which is a multi-property phased development project on Pleasant Street down in our Roosevelt Park neighborhood. The subject site will be Phase 2 and will consist of the reuse of the Habitat Kent offices for office and preschool uses and the construction of 20 affordable homes in 10 attached duplexes, and it does include 48 parking spaces.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments on this item? All right, this is another important affordable housing project in our city, and we appreciate the work that Habitat for Humanity does in our community. With that, I will turn to our deputy city clerk to call the question, and commissioners, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, commissioners, next that will take us to our second ordinance tonight.
An ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2023-15 for fiscal year 2024, Amendment Number 11.
All right, can I get a motion? All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Sassi, you want to tell us about this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For today, we had 15 different items, so I'll move through them. First is retiree healthcare department. It's the general and police-fire healthcare funds in the amount of $2.2 million due to some higher, some larger-than-average claims and overall higher costs in fiscal 2024, which we did discuss at our last meeting. Item number two is for the Parks and Rec Department. This is for the Plaster Creek-Silver Creek Trail Study in the amount of $1.5 million. Next is for the Parks and Rec Department for the Community Forestry Grant. It's to recognize and appropriate that grant in the amount of $50,000 from the Department of Natural Resources. Next is also from the Parks and Rec Department, a new Parks Capital Fund. It's requesting to appropriate the Parks Village Fund balance in amount of $1.5 million and to also combine that with the amount of $1.4 million. Number five is for our community's children. This is for the Grow 1000 Employer Community of Practice. This will help to continue to provide support to the businesses that are working with us on this program and accept an award from Steelcase in the amount of $75,000. Next is also for our community's children for the Grand Rapids 1000 Youth Hiring Initiative in the amount of $444,754. Item number seven is for the Water Department. This is for land acquisition for our water pumping station, $551,241.72. Next is number eight for the Engineering Department. This is the extension of the ELC primary circuit that is on Front Avenue. It's to recognize and appropriate the capital improvement fund in the amount of $162,400. Number nine is for the Engineering Department for the Berger-Goodwood Neighborhood Water Main Phase 2, an amount of $6.9 million from the state of Michigan Drinking Water Revolving Fund. Next is also for the Engineering Department. This is the reconstruction of Eleanor Street and Fremont Avenue, also to recognize and appropriate estimated revenue and expenditure reimbursement from that same fund as the last item for $545,288. Number 11 is also for the Parks and Rec Department for the Golf Course Fund in the amount of $130,000. 12 is also for the Parks and Rec Fund for our Parks Village, the fund for pool operations, $139,000. 13 is also Parks, is a request, this is for the Parks Operating Budget, Operating Fund to appropriate $555,000. Number 14, Parks and Rec, these are for the Riverwalk improvements. It's requesting to recognize and appropriate the city, the ARPA funds are re-received in the amount of $850,000. And then last is Engineering Department. This is for the construction of Division Avenue and Kendall Street Fire Stations and for the Fire Department Training Facility of a little bit over $3.6 million from the Michigan Enhancement Grant. And that's no changes in the fund balance.
Great, thank you. A lot of important projects and initiatives. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. This is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
All right, moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to our third ordinance to be adopted tonight.
An ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2025 city budget.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Let's see, I don't, I have City Manager Washington's name down. Do you want to say anything, City Manager, before I, now that it's up on the floor, before I turn to my colleagues for any comments?
Sure.
And then do a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, is the adoption of the fiscal year 25 budget. It was introduced on April 23 at approximately $690 million. We had several work sessions on the 30th, as well as the 7th and the 14th. A public hearing was held for the public comment on the proposed budget. Since the public hearing, what you have before you is a fiscal plan that represents some modification to capital, since preliminary budget, as well as some changes to grant funding and other operational funds, but the overall budget is still roughly $690 million. Fiscal year 25.
Great, thank you, City Manager. I'll open up to my colleagues for any questions or comments before I call the question. Commissioners, any questions or comments about the budget? All right, I just want to add my thanks. I know I said it this morning, and I'll say it again. I want to thank the whole team that worked on it. I do think it captures a lot of our priorities that we talked about during our strategic workshops, strategic planning workshops, and it not only supports a lot of the good initiatives, we're already doing it built on those. So I am ready tonight to vote in support of our budget. Commissioners, any other final comments? Commissioner?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll echo those same sentiments. I think this, I think a reminder to the public while we're voting on the budget for today, that work will, the work to sort of load the information, the appropriate systems, will happen, and then our fiscal year begins on July 1, so I think that's also another good reminder to the public of kind of that timeframe when you sometimes forget on the fiscal years. And so that work will happen, so thank you to all who are a part of that. But a reminder that this, while there are many meetings in May around our budget, this is, we're having our midyear review in October, and so those are always really good times to connect. That's where we're talking about priorities, and City Manager brought that up as we had that first meeting at sort of the end of April to talk about, you know, sometimes it can seem like a condensed process, but this is really happening all year round. So just wanted to share that. I think last year I said misinformation was one of the challenges that we had about sort of what we do and how we make decisions, and so want to continue to highlight what that process looks like and how to engage in that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any final questions or comments? All right, with that, we will call for the vote. It's a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Sassi.
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, that will take us to our scheduled public hearing, and as I indicated, we have two scheduled public hearings tonight, but they're on the same project. So commissioners, with your support, I'll take those together unless I see opposition. Okay, so let me read these into record, and then I'll turn it to Mr. John O'Cluster from Economic Development to tell us about these. And then if you're here tonight to be heard on this project, I'll invite you up to speak to it. This is a public hearing to consider establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for JV Enterprise, and this is located at 2037 Division Avenue. And then the companion with that is a public hearing to consider an application for a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for the same project, JV Enterprise, located at 2037 Division Avenue. So with that, we'll start tonight with our Economic Development Director, John O'Cluster, to tell us about this, commissioners. I'll see if you have any questions, and then if you are here tonight to be heard on this item, I'll invite you up to give comments. Mr. Cluster?
Thank you. We do have a slide, there should be a slide, maybe not. This, yeah. Yep, right up there. Great. So as mentioned, two public hearings related to an application for a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for this property located at 2037 South Division Avenue and the Burton Heights Business Association in the Burton Heights, Burton Heights area. JV Enterprise is an entity that's been making investments in this area for some time. There are investments that look like this, building by building, making improvements. So this is a 4,600-square-foot building that's been determined to be functionally obsolete. It's in a state of pretty significant disrepair. There are two tenants existing in the building, operating out of there, and then there is a vacant retail space as well. The proposed project would result in the rehabilitation, including new storefronts, roof, masonry, electrical and mechanical systems throughout. The cost of the rehabilitation is estimated at $240,000, and the applicant is pursuing a target of 20% participation in the project by women-owned, minority-owned, or micro-local subcontractors. The existing tenants will remain, and they will enjoy the improvements. There are seven employees there now, and, or I'm sorry, there are five employees there now, and seven jobs will be created by a new tenant, which is proposed as an office use, and that's been approved by the Planning Commission in April, as that is a special land use. So the applicant has been engaged with the Burton Heights Business Association for some time, has presented the project to the Garfield Park Neighborhoods Association, and I do have Mr. Leonard Van Druen in here representing JV Enterprise to talk about the project.
Thank you, welcome. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners, for considering this. I've been active in Burton Heights for a while, quite a while, and one of my strategies is to buy old, dilapidated, obsolete buildings, renovate them, and try to attract tenants to the neighborhood that are good for the neighborhood, and so that's the goal here as well. And your consideration of Oprah will allow me to spend that money but still charge rents that are attractive and appropriate for my tenants. And we have three tenants here. We have Myrna and Elder, who are a married couple that immigrated from Honduras and run a clothing store. We have Joe Durant, who runs, owns and operates his upholstery shop. And then I will be bringing a new tenant to the neighborhood, a nonprofit called ASJ, who will, was attracted because of the renovations I'm doing on this space enabled by Oprah. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Not a question, just a comment. I have the pleasure of serving with Leonard on the South Division Granville Corridor Improvement Authority. He's a resident of this part of town and owns several other properties and does a lot to invest in the neighborhood, so excited to see this moving forward, and I'm looking forward to support it.
All right, thank you. So is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this item, which again is an obsolete property rehabilitation district request? All right, seeing none, I will close those public hearings, and this will come back to us in our Committee of the Whole at our commission meeting next month. So with that, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment. So if you are here tonight to be heard on any other topic, you are welcome to come forward. We do ask you to review the meeting expectations. They're up there, projected against the wall. I'll remind you of a few things. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. You'll be given up to three minutes to speak. We ask that you do a few things. We ask that you refrain from clapping, or cheering, or booing, or using profanity, vulgar language, threats, name-calling, or making derogatory comments. If you are disruptive during the meeting, I'll ask you to leave, and if you don't leave, then we'll have to ask our chief to help escort you out. So with that, I will So with that, I will open up public comments with Mr. DeAndre Jones.
How's everybody doing? I'm Dee Jones, I'm just thankful to be alive, it's been a good year.
Yes, sir.
And so it was cool to see the amphitheater event, it was cool to speak to Dick DeVos, I always said I was going to be a billionaire, I'm a very passionate person, I'm very bold, you want to see change, I'm really a very fearless person, nobody's going to put fear in my heart of seeing economic change, of seeing, of getting people out of poverty, of stop seeing people struggle. Couple things, you know, I'd be around in the community, in the hood, in the trenches over there, like on Division, when it's like a Friday or a Saturday, and there's 200 cars parked outside, and there's hundreds of people parked outside in the parking lots, or when I'm outside and I'm downtown, and I'm chilling outside, and then I hear all of the police sirens, and then I walk around the street, and then I run into Chief Winstrom, and there's blood on the street because a little girl was killed, a 15-year-old girl, like I really be around the community and I see these things, so when I look at y'all, you know, everybody that works here, the government, like, you know, this stuff is very deep to me, and I really love this community, and that's why I had to walk up to Dick DeVos and let him know, like, who I am, I'm pretty sure he knows who I am, but I had to let him know in person, because it's always good to let people know in person, because I'm here, I'm here to change my community, I'm here to be the change I want to see, and they say 90% of it is showing up, and 10% of it is doing the work, and so when I get out, and I get, and I go fly to North Carolina, and I go after this vision I got, everybody has a vision, and what they feel like could be changed, and I'm pretty sure I won't see eye to eye with everybody, and what they feel is best for people, and what they feel is not best for people, but I know I'm gonna stand up, and I'm always be genuine, and I'm gonna be authentic, and I'll always be Jones, and I'll always have the same energy everywhere I go, because that's just all I know, is to be true to who I am. So when y'all see those billionaires, and you see those powerful people, let them know you here, don't be scared, be bold, because humanity, like I said, we need people to stand up for the community, we need people to show their humanity, we need people to care for others, there's people struggling, there's people that ain't got no house, there's people that ain't got no food, and I'm gonna hold them to that, if I gotta die for that, I don't care, I'm not scared, I'm not afraid to die, I'm just, I know one day I'll die, but I think, the thing I think I hate is, I wouldn't be able to achieve everything I could achieve, wouldn't be able to do everything and put my love and passion to everything that I truly want to see for our community, which is economic change and getting people out of poverty, true struggle, because I've seen it, I've seen a lot of blood, I've seen a lot of crazy things around our community, and I'm always be genuine and true to who I am, I don't care who doesn't like me, and who, I care for the people who does like me, and I just hope, you know what I'm saying, one day we'll be able to see that change, I'm going to see that change, I'm going to be that change, and I don't care what I have to go through, I don't care who I have to go through, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, others wish to be heard?
Thanks, Dee, my name's John Williamson, I live on the southeast side, I study the language of the birds like Master Fard, Black Lives Matter, Justice for Patrick, Justice for Dejaun, Justice for Riley, Justice for All Stolen Lives, I believe that anti-racism may be the silver bullet to reforming this city, I would encourage those of you in positions of power to do an anti-racism training, I'd urge you to maybe consider the Core Faith-Based Anti-Racism Training, or the Race, sort of a sister group that does anti-racism training in this city. I'm going to read from this book, Between the World and Me by Ta-Nehisi Coates, he wrote it to his 15-year-old son about police violence, about the dangers of being a young black man with a black body, "I write you in your 15th year, I am writing you because this is the year you saw Eric Garner choked to death for selling cigarettes, because you know now that Renisha McBride was shot for seeking help, that John Crawford was shot down for browsing in a department store, and you have seen men in uniform drive by and murder Tamir Rice, a 12-year-old whom they were oath-bound to protect, and you know now, if you did not before, that the police departments of your country have been endowed with the authority to destroy your body, it does not matter if the destruction is the result of an unfortunate overreaction, perhaps that was sure was thinking. It does not matter if it originates from misunderstanding, it does not matter if the destruction springs from foolish policy, sell cigarettes without the right proper authority, your body can be destroyed, resent the people trying to entrap your body, and it can be destroyed, turn into a dark stairwell, and your body can be destroyed, the destroyers will rarely be held accountable, mostly they will receive pensions. And destruction is merely the superlative form of domination whose prerogatives include friskings, detaining, beatings, and humiliations, all this is common to black people, all this is old for black people, no one is held responsible. It is hard to face this, but all our phrasing, race relations, racial chasm, racial justice, racial profiling, white privilege, even white supremacy serves to obscure that racism is a visceral experience, that it dislodges brains, blocks airways, rips muscle, extracts organs, cracks bones, breaks teeth. You must never look away from this, you must always remember that the sociology, the history, the economics, the graphs, the charts, the regressions, all land with great violence upon the body. And so for many years, people have been protesting in the streets, the violence against the bodies of black people, Dr. King, many people in this room have protested against violence, Dr. King marched, these peaceful demonstrations were a powerful contrast to the cruelty and violence of the police. Because of these arrests, of these nonviolent protesters, there was a mass outrage, right now, there is a system, dozens of arrests, protesters have been arrested, and the police have gotten away with it, and the news has not been telling the story, justice for all stolen lives."
All right, others wish to be heard? No clapping.
Oh, fuck you.
All right.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Amy Brock, I work part-time in Ward 3, and I vote in the 495-48 zip code, good to see everyone tonight. I want to talk about the core principle of equity and related to housing and opportunity in Grand Rapids. I had the training today, and they talked about the wealth-income gap, and I'd like to think I'm fairly educated on diversity, but I was not, and they had us guess the wealth-income gap between white people and black people in our city, and I guessed that out of every $100 of wealth for white people, that black people would have about $50 of wealth, and I am lower-middle-class myself, and it is $8 for every $100 for black people, so I was humbled today. Until 2014, Grand Rapids zoning had redline laws that included race as descriptors, it was very prejudicial. We have seven Grand Rapids neighborhoods that were traditionally black, and four out of those are 50% plus primarily African-American, and they have the highest unemployment, highest dropout rates, lowest homeownership, and most difficulty securing both home and business loans. The other three have high gentification rates, and people are being pushed out of their neighborhoods that they used to be forced into. So in 1968, right one week after the assassination of MLK, we passed the Fair Housing Act, but we haven't come very far in Grand Rapids, and I'd like to think that a lot of you guys have worked really hard to get your possessions, and I just think sometimes people with six figures, maybe we lose sight, even me, at 40 grand a year with five figures, maybe we lose sight. So when I meet my unhoused neighbors, and I heard one of these fine folks speak about our unhoused neighbors, and how they say, when they're hungry, they say ladies first, I sometimes serve our unhoused neighbors, and 99% of them are so polite. As an ally, who worries about being unhoused myself, I still realize I'm privileged, and I must speak on this travesty of justice. We surveil people of color in the urban neighborhoods, yet we dare say equity is one of our core principles. People of color are discriminated, as well as other marginalized groups in the city, while we state surveys that 80% are enjoying benefits of satisfaction in Grand Rapids. I question this validity of this survey. I realize many of you do work hard, but you've lost touch with the majority of your citizens. Safe housing improves educational opportunity, economic prosperity, and true opportunity to benefit from the greatness that is Grand Rapids. We can no longer start with a prayer and then skew statistics and lie, may the truth shed light on a better future for long-term sustainability for everyone in Grand Rapids.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Bee, I live in the 3rd Ward, I hope I can get all your attention, so you're not just staring down at your phones. For months now, you've heard your citizens begging you to empathize with their compassion for the Palestinian people, but obviously, I can see why our local government officials, who sit comfortably in the pockets of the DeVos family, within a state, with a state, within a state full of Israeli arms manufacturers, wouldn't feel particularly inclined to show any empathy for the lives they helped destroy. Your utter lack of empathy for your fellow human beings is also hugely apparent in the actions you take within our city. For example, this past Friday, Rosalyn, you gave your final State of the City address, in which you congratulated yourself for improved community police relations during your time as mayor. To say that this statement is out of touch with reality would be putting it lightly, especially when your police force sought to intimidate and arrest four peaceful protesters just two days prior. This same police force has been called literally hundreds of times to assist citizens facing discrimination and other forms of decidedly non-peaceful protest at the hands of violent evangelicals outside of the Planned Parenthood on Cherry and Morris. Not only have none of these violent men spewing hateful beliefs been arrested, while the people they are attacking have regularly left in handcuffs, with your officers beaming with pride to have nabbed yet another dangerous queer activist, what will it take for any of you to wake up to the immense harm you're causing? Lost my spot. You could be over here with the rest of us, fighting for a better, more loving world like you claim to want to create, but instead you're congratulating yourselves on building a fascist police force that has violently murdered four people within the past two years. If you think your continued escalation will scare any of us into sitting back and letting our city defend, descend into full-blown fascism while you all stroke each other's egos, you're in for a rude awakening. Drop the charges, free Palestine, defund Israel, and especially defund the GRPD.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Ivy, and I live in the 3rd Ward, I'm also here today in solidarity with the four protesters and organizers that were arrested last week. While the video footage of your police force suddenly arresting four peaceful protesters was shocking to witness, it was not at all surprising. The GRPD have clearly shown where they stand when it comes to peace, justice, freedom, and who they're willing to arrest in order to uphold their version of those values. To the GRPD, peace is the criminalization of dissent, and justice is intentionally targeting peaceful organizers and leading them away in handcuffs. Freedom is a privilege coveted only by those who share in the oppressive ideas upheld by our local and federal government. As my partner Bee mentioned, the hateful, disruptive, and often violent men protesting outside of Planned Parenthood on Cherry Street are free to endlessly terrorize the neighborhood they occupy, while those who oppose them are treated as the real threat. Despite being small-town cops with big-city egos, the GRPD truly is just one cog in a nationwide machine that aims to use intimidation tactics in order to discourage activists from engaging in our right to free speech and our right to protest, ideas that this genocidal country was supposedly founded upon. And while all of us should be deeply concerned that speaking out against some of the worst atrocities many of us have witnessed in our lifetimes is being treated as a criminal act, I hope that tonight's turnout is an indication that the GRPD's scare tactics will not work. I am tired of watching people I love be treated like criminals for caring about their communities. I'm tired of seeing yet another name in headlines belonging to the latest victim of the city's bloodthirsty police department's unrestrained power. Justice for all the lives stolen by the Grand Rapids Police Department, defund the GRPD, and free Palestine.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor Bliss and Commissioners, my name is Joyce Gibson, I've been a resident of Grand Rapids for four to five years now, and I'm here to announce that I'm running for Commissioner of the 3rd Ward here in Grand Rapids, in Grand Rapids, at the City Hall. I want to say this, a person's actions speak louder than their words, not this money or influence in the community, no, no one is entitled, not you, Mr. Goy. I am a follower of Christ, that's who I am, I'm a single parent, my twins will be 40 years old in two years, I'm a college graduate, I have a bachelor's degree in science, in psychology, and finally, I'm a recovering addict of 31 years, of 31 years. There's going to be a forum June the 11th from 7:30 to 9:00, and I'm inviting anybody, if they're interested, to see me afterwards, for the number to call, and please make yourself known to me and to the other candidates, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Good evening, my name is Dani Selaya, I'm a union member from Ward 1, and I'm here to speak on, in solidarity with the four protesters who were unjustly arrested on May 15th, Nakba Day, and calling the city to drop the charges, and the charges activists have faced in prior months, demanding police accountability. Because what does it say when our city didn't even bother to move out a resolution calling to move the money, yet the city was punctual in, in leading the way of the rising police brutality? We had the incident in May, in May 15th, where four peaceful protesters were arrested, and then in Detroit in May 19th, and then this morning, as police used pepper spray on University of Michigan students. So the city didn't bother to, like, demand for more money from the federal government, but it did bother to lead the way in police repression and police violence, and for what reason? For your own political career? Is it worth that much, the rising attacks on our free speech, families being separated, parents being sent to jail, and the attacks on BIPOC organizers? Or is it to defend a political career, or Representative Skolton, who would prefer to protect war profiteers no matter the cause, who voted to defund the United Nations Refugee and Works Agency, leading to massive starvation, who voted for mass censorship through her vote to ban TikTok, and whose Secretary Blinken has admitted was to ban pro-Palestine content, and who continues to provide billions of our tax dollars for a genocide? Meanwhile, we continue to struggle in the city with rising costs of living, with low wages, and so much more. And I think a lot of people think that our civil rights will only be threatened after the election, regardless of what the outcome is, but that attack on our civil rights is happening right now, we saw that this past weekend, we've been seeing it these past months. So I ask the Commission, what do you want your legacy to become, especially those of us who supposedly come from equity and justice backgrounds? Do the right thing and drop the charges.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Tamara, and I'm from Byron Center. Get my glasses on. I address you today with a plea for justice and reason in the face of recent arrests of four, of the four protesters during a peaceful demonstration. These arrests have raised grave concerns among our community, the excessive costs incurred by these arrests are burdensome for our city, both financially and socially, and they work to stifle free expression of opinion. According to the statistics from the American Action Forum in 2015, it costs $13,607 to arrest someone, adjusting for inflation, that figure would be closer to $18,000 in 2024. These costs include not just the direct expenses associated with the arrest itself, but also the subsequent legal proceedings and potential incarceration. As responsible stewards of our city's resources, we must question whether such expenditures align with our priorities and values. Arresting peaceful protesters not only drains valuable resources, including police time and effort, but it also sends a detrimental, detrimental message to our citizens, it undermines the trust between law enforcement and the community they serve, and damages the reputation of our city as a place that values freedom of expression and assembly protected by the First Amendment. Moreover, as residents of Grand Rapids, we are all stakeholders in, in the efficient and responsible allocation of our city's resources. The unnecessary expenditure on arresting peaceful protesters detracts from other critical areas where those funds could be better utilized, such as education, healthcare, and affordable housing. Therefore, I employ, I implore this council to push for the charges brought against these protesters to be dropped immediately. We must recognize that their actions were not motivated by malice or intent to cause harm, but by a sincere desire to advocate for change in a manner consistent with our democratic principles. Instead of criminalizing peaceful expression of opinion, let us engage in meaningful dialogue and seek peaceful solutions to address the underlying issues that led to these protests. Let us work together to build a community where all voices are heard, respected, and valued. I urge you to act with compassion and wisdom in resolving this matter, let us demonstrate to the world that Grand Rapids is a city that embraces diversity, upholds the rights of its citizens, and stands on the side of justice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Sam, I live in the city. I'm also here today to talk about the protesters. I'm not going to try to appeal to your morality tonight. I haven't been here in months, we've really backed off this commission. We couldn't get the resolution passed. It was disappointing, but we've continued to organize and really build a community here. So we had a peaceful rally on Nakba Day, which was the violent displacement of Palestinian people, which continues to this day. We wanted to commemorate that day, the Arab community came out, there were about 80 protesters there, which is a small protest relatively. And, you know, we decided to march. We've done it dozens of times. I've lived in the city for years, I've been to countless protests downtown. This was the most benign, peaceful protest that I've been to in months. Like, there was no disruption, really, other than blocking traffic, and a lot of people blocked traffic, and it was 7:00 PM at night, there was hardly anyone on the road. I didn't think there would be a police presence. All of a sudden, we have 12 police cruisers following us. Like, it was absolutely outrageous. I could not believe it. And, you know, blasting sirens, telling us to get on the sidewalk, eventually we did get on the sidewalk, but I couldn't even hear them up front, you know? We made it back to the park, and all of a sudden they arrested four people, for nothing. These are completely bogus charges. And, you know, the only conclusion I can come to is the escalation that's happening around the country, what happened in University of Michigan this morning, where they were gassing and cracking the skulls of 19, 20-year-olds, it's happening all over the country, it's ridiculous. Like, they're protesting a genocide. There are 40,000 people dead. So I don't know what to say anymore. I just want these charges dropped, I've never seen anything like that, and I've been to a lot of protests. It was a complete repressive act of retribution, for whatever reason, a switch flipped on our group, all of a sudden, and now we're a target. You know, and Chief Winstrom gave a quote to the collegiate that said, "We've largely been accommodating to this group," and there are two things about that. One, we don't consider spying on us, and we don't consider sending officers to our rallies as accommodating, which we know has been happening. And there is some truth in that, like, we've largely evaded arrests, and we're happy about that. We don't want to see people be arrested, we want people to come out to our rallies and feel safe. We want to hold events for kids and families, and we want rallies to be safe. But the only thing that was unsafe there were the police when they showed up. You know, that changed the entire mood. So I'm here today to say, drop the charges, free Palestine, of course, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Hannah, and I live in the Second Ward. It's clear that the police and city leadership are confused on the difference between being unsafe and being uncomfortable. I have attended a number of pro-Palestine protests in the last few months. None have included anything beyond marching and chanting. No one from these protests has done anything to make anyone unsafe, including the four protesters arrested last Wednesday night. Protesters were confronted with a sea of threatening police members, blocking traffic, and intimidating and arresting people exercising their freedom of speech. What were they protecting? I acknowledge that much of what is being said makes some people very uncomfortable. I should hope you all are very uncomfortable with wasting our tax money to fund police to intimidate and dissuade people from speaking up against our taxes being used to commit genocide in Palestine. Please ensure that charges against these protesters are dropped, insist that they stop wasting taxpayer money on blocking people's right to freedom of speech. Be uncomfortable and realize that you are not unsafe. Stop funneling so much of our taxes into a policing system that has actually shown that it doesn't make Grand Rapids residents any safer.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Anthony, I live in the city. Like many cities in the US, Grand Rapids has shrouded itself in this veneer of social progressivism. The names of past civil rights leaders, victims of police violence, social activists and artists are all reincarnated on street signs and on street art, and in your speeches and on your social medias. How is history remembered those who held up apartheid? How is history remembered those who had held up Jim Crow? How will history remember those who repressed the anti-genocide movement? Not very well, I'm sure. I am here in solidarity with those unjustly arrested. It is a horrifying display of the true extent of our state's power, but such displays of power do not historically cause the repressed movement to cower in fear or to dissolve. Sending 12 police cruisers after peaceful protesters who are complying with police orders already, and arresting four people so clearly show this city's violent and fascistic intent. Drop all the charges, free Palestine.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Diana, and I am a resident in the Third Ward. I'm going to draw a line for you. This started in October, when so many of us wrote, called, and tried to communicate with every single one of you. We asked our city, the city of Grand Rapids, to make a symbolic statement showing solidarity with Palestine, and to call on our elected officials across the state and the nation to stop sending our tax dollars to this genocide. Every single one of you acted in cowardice. You've hidden behind jargon stating you can't do anything because it's not the nature of this body, while we're here to say that doesn't cut it. You are either complicit in this genocide for personal gain, political standing, whatever it might be, or you know that this genocide is wrong. Whichever way you stand, tell us unequivocally how you feel. Shout it from your social media, shout it from your campaign pulpits. We know you have your own political aspirations, Mayor Bliss, and that's probably why you've remained so incredibly silent on this issue. Now you can only do one thing: attempt to salvage the legacy of your career and work to right the wrongs your actions and this body has done against its people. The irony is you all get the last word at every single meeting. It's the sheer design of these meetings. You have refused to take any action every time it is requested. So let's get back to that line being drawn. As Grand Rapids leaders, you have demonstrated you do not listen. We've seen it over and over again, especially when you are brutalizing and killing black folks on our streets. So what do the people do? The people take to the streets. There is nowhere left for us to speak, there is no one listening. Then, and this next part is important, you send the police after those exercising their voices and their right to say, "Stop killing me, stop killing people." You try to silence the voice of the people, a clear violation of the democratic values you all purport to uphold. This brute force arrested four community members with impunity on May 15th, and now here we all are again. So this line isn't a line, it's a circle. We're going to keep coming back. If you invested in the service our city's needs, instead of a killer-cop brute force who serves a singular faction and belief system, we wouldn't be here. We could be home with our families. But we're going to keep coming back, don't you understand this? We'll keep walking in circles unless you break the wheel. You can drop the charges for the four individuals and show up for the community who gave you this power. We gave you the gift of serving us. Know that every single one of you, and I am directing this at my Third Ward representatives who have yet to be responsive to anything they have been asked. We will never, you will never hold the power of the people ever again. You do not have our support, no matter how much hand-wringing and liberal good you do it, it is not enough, do not be a coward. Free Palestine and drop the charges against the Grand Rapids Four.
Others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Emerson, I live on the edge of the First Ward. I'm standing up today to implore Chief Winstrom, Mayor Bliss, and each of the city commissioners to use their influence to drop the charges against the four individuals arrested at the May 15th Nakba Day rally downtown. These four people were intentionally targeted by GRPD at the end of a peaceful rally and march to create an environment of intimidation against hundreds of community members who have been marching, rallying, and educating for seven months without incident. If the GRPD wanted to keep people safe, they would have helped facilitate the march's quick movement through downtown, which they've done on half a dozen to a dozen previous occasions for our group alone. But instead, they waited until the march was over and targeted community members they assumed to be organizers, poaching them off sidewalks, aggressively manhandling, and leaving them in a hot, closed vehicle for more than 20 minutes without ventilation. You would not do that to your dog. It is clear that the GRPD serves the function of intimidation rather than safety. For example, on Wednesday, May 8th, a GRPD officer unlawfully entered private property in order to eavesdrop and spy on a community meeting. This behavior is unconscionable. GRPD has a history of arbitrary and retaliatory enforcement of laws when it comes to political dissent, such as the local activists facing felony charges for using a megaphone. How does that track make it make sense? Or their treatment of groups such as Movimiento Cosecha, or the four people brutally murdered by GRPD in the last two years. These are not good stats. It is our duty as citizens to speak out against our government enabling genocide, as we've been doing by every peaceful means possible for half a year. Appealing to your conscience, your values, and your ethics didn't work to pass symbolic ceasefire resolution or divestiture for our local tax dollars for murdering people around the world, so now I resort to your fiscal responsibility to Grand Rapids. Bringing charges against these four community members will cost the city many tens of thousands of dollars unnecessarily, and it will not deter the community from upholding our moral imperative to oppose genocide. We will continue to stand up, to speak, to fight in the name of innocent people being starved and murdered for the political whims of a dying empire. You failed to listen to the community at every opportunity, despite repeated requests to meet one-on-one, despite the community speaking at length at these meetings. Now is your opportunity to do the right thing. Any individual one of you can choose to politically pressure Chief Winstrom in the city to drop the charges. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard? No, no clapping.
Hi, my name is Peter, I'm a resident of Kent County. I'm speaking here in support of the four Palestinian protesters that have been arrested. And, you know, I find it, you know, truly disgraceful that you're willing to let people get shot on the streets by cops and arrest peaceful protesters like this. I mean, do you guys care about your own citizens, or do you care about the money in your pockets? Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Micah, I'm from Niles, Michigan, but last year I attended Grand Valley State University, and next year I plan on attending Grand Rapids Community College to continue my education. With that, for the past year, I've been decently involved in the student movement, heavily involved in the pro-Palestine movement. So I know that what I'm going to say has been addressed by a few other speakers tonight, but I cannot stress this enough: arresting peaceful protesters is a really dumb idea. I don't know why you people will condone it, I don't know why you will continue to funnel millions of dollars to these ignorant fascist pigs who shouldn't be allowed to own a gun, let alone a badge, okay? This will not work, all right? Your intimidation tactics will not work. People are unsatisfied, workers are unsatisfied, the students are unsatisfied, nobody is satisfied in this country. And I know that you people aren't stupid, I know that you watch the news, I know that you get the reports of what's going on around the country, and by acting the same way as some of the most brutal and fascistic police organizations around the rest of the country, all you are going to do is alienate your citizens more, and you are going to make peaceful protests, peaceful protests like this more likely and more inevitable. If you actually want to stop the peaceful protests, you will defund the police, you will drop the charges on the Grand Rapids Four, and you will draft a symbolic resolution for a ceasefire in Palestine. Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Erica Wade, I'm from the northwest side of Grand Rapids. I'm obviously here to urge you guys to drop the unnecessary charges on the protesters last week, that statement should be clear by now. There's something else I want to say to you guys. Please remember why you are in these seats. Please remember why you came here. You came here to make a difference. You came here to make something happen. And now you're misusing power, and you're intimidating people who are trying to speak out because they have nothing else to do, because they don't have the power that you have. I encourage you to educate yourself on the situation that they are protesting. I feel like a lot of people simply do not know a lot that's going on, and they refuse to learn past what satisfies their preconceived idea of people in the Middle East. However, this is very connected to all the problems that we face here. And just please, please remember the reason why you're here. People are pleading for change, they're asking for change, and you're silencing them, and you're telling them to be quiet, and, I mean, the truth is in the people, and they're not going to stop until you listen. They won't. And so, instead of arresting them and silencing them, I encourage you to look at yourself and what you're doing for the situation, and if you're being just as complicit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello again, I am Sarah, a Palestinian-American who was born and raised in Grand Rapids. I'm here again to ask you to represent your people. We are urging Mayor Bliss, the chief of police, and the city prosecutor to drop the charges on the four protesters who were arrested at the end of the Nakba Day rally. They are currently facing misdemeanor charges, however, they have done nothing wrong. They were using their First Amendment right to protest our government for arming and supporting an ongoing genocide in Palestine. This arrest will not stop the people's peaceful and spirited protests. No politician will silence the people. And I want to make it clear that I will never forget any of your faces and what choices you have made since October. During the first commissioners' meeting I attended on November 14th, where we were asking for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, roughly 15,800 Palestinians had been killed by the IDF. Two-thirds of hospitals were in a state of total collapse. Let's compare this to the numbers now. The number of human lives that we have lost because of Israel and the United States. At least 35,647 people have been killed and 79,852 wounded in Israeli attacks on Gaza since October 7th. As of May 2024, Gaza has no fully functioning hospitals, zero, zero. I've said this again, or I've said this to you all before, and I will say it again. How can you continue to sit here and listen to your constituents constantly telling you that we are against this, and not burning to advocate for your people or for humanity? How did you get so far from what drew you to this role in the first place? Was your goal ever to represent your people? In this critical moment, the sheer indignity of finding myself in this situation, forced to come here and beg you all to listen, is beyond comprehension. I implore you to listen, for the gravity of the matter could not be overstated. It is with an overwhelming sense of disgust that in the year 2024, our nation remains complicit, channeling its resources into a cause that defies reason and humanity. Our hard-earned tax dollars are being funneled into a genocide. And I will say this once again, this money should be fueling our own communities, and maybe instead of arresting the innocent people that are protesting in Grand Rapids, focus on helping the ICC arrest the real criminals, represent your people.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Eduardo, I live in Grand Rapids. Many members of the community already beautifully worded the demands needed to be met. I am not such an eloquent speaker, so I will keep this short. Drop the charges on the four Nakba Day peaceful protesters, end police brutality, and free Palestine.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Wajdi, and I've been a resident of Grand Rapids my whole life. As a Palestinian and a fourth-year pharmacy student that finished classes here downtown, I can't help but feel guilty when four people were arrested for protesting in my city, a genocide of my people. I keep thinking of how many of these charges could ruin my career before it even started. That something as simple as exercising my First Amendment right could mean losing my job or getting kicked out of school. Because for some reason, saying killing kids is bad will get you arrested. What makes this even more shameful is that they were arrested on the anniversary of the Nakba, the great catastrophe where over 750,000 of my people over 75 years ago were all kicked out and displaced. I'm here to demand all charges be dropped for these protesters. I'm also here to clarify that arresting us will not stop these peaceful protests. No amount of gaslighting will stop our movement, and you will not silence us. Thank you, and I hope you'll do the right thing.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Eli, I live in Wyoming, and I'm going to keep this relatively short. When you arrest nonviolent protesters, you are telling us that you do not respect your own constitution. When you don't respect your own constitution, you are telling us that you do not respect the rule of law. If you guys don't respect the rule of law, why should anyone else? Why should any of us pretend that you have even an ounce of legitimacy?
Thank you, Eli. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, I am Jax Johnson, I live in the Second Ward of Grand Rapids. I'm 16 years old. I was at the rally for Palestine on the 15th. I left before they started marching because I was suggested to by a trusted adult to who I left before they started marching because I was suggested to by a trusted adult who also attended. She wasn't worried about the people at or leading the protest. She wasn't even, she wasn't even that worried about the counter protesters. She was worried about the police. It seems like she had the right to be. What does it say about the Grand Rapids Police Force that adults are first forced to ask youth to leave peaceful protests out of fear for the youth's safety around the police? A friend of my father, who attended the rally and stayed for the march, said the grand, said the crowd was given conflicting commands by the GRPD officers. One moment it was get off the sidewalk, the next it was get out of the road. Often there was nowhere else to go. How is the public supposed to follow guidelines when the GRPD can't even get the guidelines straight? All this to say, the arrests made on the 15th were wrongful and the charges should be dropped. Peaceful protesters should not be silenced by GRPD's imit, intimidation tactics. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Corlin. I live in the city. I was thinking that the police should send one of their guys to talk at one of this because no one else seems very happy with how they've been brutalizing the citizens of this city. Yeah, there is a famine going on in Gaza right now. With a population of 2.1 million people before the war, that means at least 400 people are dying, are, people are dying of starvation per day. So when we say genocide is happening, we're talking about genocide happening. So for the people to protest against genocide and be met with such crazy amounts of violence, to be surrounded by a fleet of police vehicles within minutes of starting a peaceful march, to be, have them blasting us with their noise guns, scaring us, giving us conflicting information, and then to wait until the march has ended to move in and arrest peaceful protesters for exercising their First Amendment rights, it's criminal. You should all be ashamed if you're supporting it. Release the, drop the charges, liberate Palestine.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Nick. I am a worker and union member here in Grand Rapids. I stand here in solidarity with the people of Palestine and the four peaceful protesters who stood against an ongoing, tax-funded genocide. For the sake of an oil, for the sake of oil investor dividends, the people of Palestine have undergone decades of an ethnic cleansing. I'm a firm believer that a better world is possible, and a better world is exactly what those protesters were advocating for. But I'm not here to appeal to the good nature of politicians and police. In fact, the most ethical thing you all can do is quit your jobs. Whether or not you think so, I believe you can be a part of the solution and not the problem. Instead, I want to speak to the working class of Grand Rapids, who fund the very machines that will put us behind bars if we step out of line, if we attempt to stop generating bloody profits for the investors who determine the state of the world, if we strive for a better world. These four people were arrested on pedantic and arbitrary grounds, and it's a great example of how policing as an institution is both anti-democratic and pro-genocide. It was an attempt to intimidate and to entertain a bunch of bored cops who want to feel righteous and big. If your tax dollars are going both towards a genocide and to arrest peaceful protesters, I implore you to question the very core of this nation. Drop the charges and free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask you to please respect not to clap.
Hello, I'm also here in solidarity with the protesters. I'm not very good at public speaking at all, and everything I tend to do these days is much more difficult with a baby in my arms. But I just wanted for you to see the face of another type of protester. We try to go to a lot of them.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you start with your name and the city that you live in?
Yes, I'm Sarah and I live in Kentwood. I am a special education teacher and I try to bring my family along to these protests as much as I can. And I remember growing up as a little girl, going to school and learning all about history and all of the atrocities that have, man, she's been okay this whole time until right now. She just really wants to make a call. I'm going to put her down.
I can just hold her for you?
Okay, thank you.
You have time, you have two minutes.
So, growing up in school, I learned about all the atrocities that have happened across the globe from the beginning of time. And, you know, all things like genocides and the Holocaust, all sorts of horrible things. And I remember thinking, well, if I lived in that time, what would I have done? Would I have just sat home and just kind of accepted that that was going on? Maybe, but I hope that I wouldn't if I was there. And so to show my children that I'm not okay with genocide, I try to do something. And there's really not much that I, as an individual, can do. So I go to these rallies and I, I shout in the streets to free Palestine very peacefully. And I, I could have been there that day. I could have been arrested. And that little one nurses every couple hours still. And the one in the yellow over there that's been grunting this whole time, I'm his main caregiver. So what would happen to my kids if I was arrested for standing there saying, "Free Palestine"? It terrifies me. I feel like I should be safe to walk around in the streets of Grand Rapids, pushing a wheelchair with a baby on my back, saying, "Free Palestine." For all those kids that are dying and all the mothers that are watching their children die and all the children that are watching their parents die and the grandparents that are watching their grandchildren die, it just, it keeps going on and on and on. There are over 15,000 kids that have lost their lives already. And kids are just kids. My kids could have been in Palestine. And so I'm going to keep doing what I can to raise awareness so everyone can know what's going on. And so hopefully we can end this. Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hey, I'm Barnabas. I live in Kent County. I'm not going to add too much to what everyone else already said, but yeah, my wife, we go to a lot of these protests and they're totally peaceful. We've never vandalized anything. We've never intimidated anybody. And so, and what Mayor, or Chief, or at least Chief Winstrom has even said that he's tolerated us for a long time. So for them to tail us at the end of a protest and then arrest us without, without warning even, you know? And, and to not, to not inform us that there's some type of buildup in the system, like there's some kind of intolerance building, I don't think is fair. And, but yeah, drop the charges, free Palestine.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is, I've spoken here before. My name is Matthew Scott. I've been, I've been a resident with, of Grand Rapids my whole 29 years of life. And it is Palestine, but they're getting their marching orders from Hamas. So, so it is not on, on Israelis, us trying to defend themselves and not a genocide that's going on with, whose victims cannot speak up for themselves is going on. One member brought up 425 and the ones that are proclaiming against the world genocide that's going on with which we know people-
Matthew, Matthew, can you direct your comments to us, not the audience?
With which we know people that advocate the, that's the world genocide going on. And I'm also here to advocate that, along with Joyce Gibson, of her own, Melanie Drosky is running in the first ward and in Joyce Gibson's ward, Al Willis, one of my fine friends, Al Willis is running too. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Kate and I'm from Jenison, but I'm here today to speak for the peaceful protesters who were arrested and also for Palestine. For eight months, we've been begging people to care about Palestine. We should have been caring for 75 years as they've been murdered and their land stolen since 1948. But instead, our community members who do care are being arrested for peacefully protesting. If we are being arrested for peacefully protesting, then who arrests our politicians who are funding a genocide? Our government has misrepresented Americans, who majority want a ceasefire. I'm begging you to be angry that thousands of people are being murdered with our money, our taxpayers' money. And if you have a shred of humanity in you, you will speak up against peaceful protesters being arrested in Grand Rapids and you will speak up for a ceasefire and a free Palestine. Palestinians are going through torture. They are going through immense trauma and we cannot be sad for them. I know I'm sad right now, but this is anger and I, I'm begging you to be angry and I'm begging you to use your voices because your voices as commissioners are more powerful. Use that power for good and do the right thing. And if you feel uncomfortable right now for me showing my emotion and my anger about a genocide, I'd like you to really reflect on that. It's not taboo to care about people dying. We don't want to be protesting. We don't want to be in the streets screaming, but we do it because we want a better world. We want to live in a better world and we want a better world for our children. So please, speak up and use your voices. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Others wish to be heard?
My name is Matt. I live in the third ward. Many of us came here to demand that the charges against peaceful protesters be dropped, in particular for the four who were recently arrested protesting for Palestine. And I would also like to bring, to call attention to the charges levied against members of the Comrades Collective for protesting the murder of Patrick Leoya by GRPD. Now, all of these charges should, A, never have happened, but they should also be dropped and each and every one of you know it. But you know what? I'm not actually going to ask you do that because I know you're not going to. Damn it, I'm sorry, I can't come up here again and ask this body to do the right thing when I know you're not going to. I mean, for years, people have been coming up here asking you to protect people's rights and humanity. In 2020, activists asked you to curtail GRPD, warning you that eventually they would kill someone, and eventually they murdered Patrick Leoya. After that, we asked you to hold them accountable, cut their funding. You give them more money and gear every single year. And recently, some of the same people in here asked for you to just make a simple statement, calling for a ceasefire and condemning a genocide, which should be the least controversial statement ever, but you couldn't even do that. Well, no, you wouldn't even do that. So instead of asking you for anything, I'm actually going to ask something of the, of the Grand Rapids community, the people in this room and the, and anyone who might be watching. I ask that we remember this moment. I ask that we remember that when our neighbors had their constitutional First Amendment rights violated by the police while peacefully protesting the genocide in Palestine, and when we came up here and asked you to defend those constitutional rights like you swore you would, I ask us all to remember that when all of that happened, they did nothing.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Jacinda Swanson. I live on the southeast side of GR in Ward Three. I'm here tonight to ask you to drop the charges against the four community members who were arrested last Wednesday evening as part of the Nakba Anniversary Rally. I participated in that entirely peaceful rally and march. There were parents there with strollers and children there. Several speakers educated us about the Nakba and the long history of Palestinians being driven out of their homes and lands and even killed. We were also rallying Wednesday night to call for a permanent ceasefire and an end to the Israeli government's genocide of at least 40,000 people, including 15,000 children, 250 aid workers, 95 journalists, and the catastrophic destruction of Palestinian homes, infrastructure, hospitals, schools, and universities. My family's Jewish traditions and history have made me particularly attuned to the need to oppose the dehumanization of any group of people and genocide, as well as the need to practice tikhun olam, which means to repair the world when there are injustices and people are not free, as we learn in the Passover Seder. We were also rallying Wednesday night because the US government is funding, actively supporting, and providing the bombs for this genocide, despite the fact, as others have mentioned, that a majority of Michiganders and US residents support a ceasefire. For 21 years, I taught political science at Western Michigan University. So US democracy, the Constitution, the civil rights movement, and other peaceful struggles are very close to my heart and issues I've read and thought about very deeply. We have been calling our elected officials, emailing them, petitioning them, posting on social media, and talking to our friends and family for seven months, sometimes even longer. We have been voting uncommitted in primary elections to get our elected leaders to listen to us and to end their illegal and immoral support of Israel's genocide of Palestinians. But our elected representatives continue to ignore us, making us and our tax dollars complicit in genocide and other war crimes. What else can people of conscience do but to hold public rallies and protest to raise awareness and pressure our elected officials to insist on a permanent ceasefire and an end to the Israeli government's genocide and occupation?
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Please drop the charges.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
I'm Cameron Kemker. Cameron Kemker, I'm from Hudsonville. I've had a mom who's worked in the downtown Grand Rapids area for very long sustained periods of her and my own life, including Roosevelt Parks and over in the Public Health Building. And yeah, I'm here today to read a little bit from the articles of, are the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, as outlined by the UN, some three years following the Holocaust. This convention states prosecutable actions as they relate to genocide. The third article specifically is what I want to reside over. The article reads, "The following acts shall be punishable: genocide, conspiracy to commit genocide, direct and public incitement to commit genocide, attempt to commit genocide," and the last one, which is our most important, complicity in genocide. Speaking up against genocide is not only a moral and ethical obligation, but a legal obligation for us as citizens and that you as representatives. Articles like these were written so people like you could stand in tandem with people like us, empowering our voices, not arrest us at peaceful protests on the 76th anniversary of a terrible day for Palestinian people, which has continued for the following 76 years and is every single day escalating. Drop the charges, defund the police, free Palestine.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Lucas, first ward. Freestyle. There's no laptop and there's no notes and there's no specific three-minute rehearsal. Because I was at a mixer having a good time with some other advertising and marketing professionals and I decided to drop that and come here when I saw the line of people. I had wanted to come here and freak you all out and be 100% positive. I was going to come and gush about the Neighborhood Summit because I really felt like it was transformative and a very big experience. And I'm going to spend three minutes on that, another day when I don't have to disrespect a bunch of people to turn toward a positive topic and ignore their call for you to very rightfully drop those charges. It's been a weird day. So the miserable failure of Larry Johnson and the Grand Rapids Public School System to keep our schools safe and address the issue of guns being brought on school property reared its head in the closest call we've had to tragedy today. I was maybe going to hint at that, but then, speaking of tyrants that are dangerous and don't respect women, I decided Netanyahu should enter into my conversation tonight. And I wanted to praise you for the hard work on the budget. I was really coming here to say two very positive things, but I wasn't- I was really coming here to say two very positive things, but I wasn't prepared to do that on the backs of all these people coming here to make a very important point. So instead, I'm going to use the last half of this to do a little storytime. I've been saving this up for almost three years. I'm sick and tired in this community of people that want to tell us the criticism of a government that's destructive, cruel, corrupt, evil, is antisemitism. And I'm sick and tired of people in this community that think it has nothing to do with this community because I live on Walker Avenue where every intersection has a sticker informing me that an Israeli company up the road, a military contractor called Plasan, is actively participating in this economy. So that negates the excuse that it doesn't involve leadership at a local level and I'm tired of that argument. But let me tell you about antisemitism and you'll get a little vision into why Lucas is cranky about cops. When I was in high school, I sat at a table with a lot of Jewish students at lunch and I heard them talking about some Easter posters that they thought were very inconsiderate to their faith because the school, a public school, had plastered "He is risen" all over the walls. And they said, "What can we do about it?" I said, "Well, you know a guy that's willing to bully a bully." So I went and tore them down because they were unconstitutional. And I was pulled out of the worst-performing class, math for me, by a cop, a school resource officer who wanted to waste my time and try to tell me he knew more about my rights than I did. And now we see that a lot later. I'm 46 years old, it's been a minute. We need to fix that kind of phenomenon and then you'll have less people cranky about cops. It's that simple. That's where I come from and it's not antisemitism.
All right, thank you, Lucas. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, friends. Mark from Grand Rapids. I have no dog in this fight, but I know one, but I'm going to say this. The people who spoke have one thing to say. When are you going to get up and vote come November? Because here's what's going to happen. You can talk all you want, but if you don't vote, you will have, you will have somebody else run this country. And we all know what he has planned in store. Because if you're not careful, he might tell Netanyahu to blast Palestine off the face of the earth. That's the truth. Hate to say it, but that's the truth. So if you don't want that to happen, get up and vote. And, and, because you young people, you can protest, but if you don't vote, the protesting means nothing. Don't be like down in, down in, down in the South. Don't be like down that governor, the governor of Louisiana is talking about putting house arrest braces on pregnant women, keeping them from fleeing to other states to avoid their lives being ruined by rape, incest, whatever. Voting matters. So, so you have the same energy up here today. I'd like to see that same energy at the ballot box in November. Because you want, you don't want that to happen again, you don't want this to happen any further. That's all I'm asking. Vote. We'll face the consequences later. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening. Eric Brown, proud lifelong Grand Rapidian and of the 3rd Ward all my life. I've come in here this evening just to say I appreciate you guys' work. I know the budget has passed. I appreciate your work on the budget to this point. I was sitting there thinking, what am I going to say? I was reminded of a meeting that several of us were at a couple of weeks ago and a very wise man talked about the preamble to our, the charter, in which one part said, part of the city's charter in the preamble says, "Promote the happiness and welfare of its people." So as it relates to the budget, we all know that budgets are fiscal or financial and fiscal representation of what priorities are. And I will acknowledge progress has been made, but I'm just going to say I think we need to make more progress in some areas. Excuse me, your second, the second person this evening talked about historic redlining. Coming from, living in a ward that has been, experienced that at a higher rate than any other ward, I've seen the effects of what historic redlining has done. What I'm asking is that, and I expect to be able to continue to work with manager, city manager, and other representatives of his cabinet, ensuring that some of the programs that we are talking about, recommending some that we do operate are fully funded so that we can have equitable outcomes and that they are able to create the strategies with specific tactics that we can do to in order to be able to have a more equitable outcomes for all the residents, but in particular the residents that have been historically disenfranchised, brown and black folks, minority folks, and other poor folks that have been historically disenfranchised. That's the organization that I work with. We've been doing that for 81 years here in this, in this community and we continue, want to continue to do that. I do have hope that we can be that community that we started out to do in 1850 and as our motto says, "Strength in Activity." I'm just imploring this body that that activity will be inclusive, truly inclusive and not in rhetoric and not just away on shelves, but that we can have equitable, equitable economic development. Again, that reaches down to those that have not been able to have that, that don't have the capacity to necessarily even figure out what that is. You got to be able to see some things in order to be able to achieve some things. So I'm reaching out to this, this body as well as the rest administration that we continue down the path that we started, that we complete the task and that we make meaningful progress towards truly equitable outcomes so that we can be a community that everybody's proud of. We know we're in different meetings or I'm in different meetings where it's a wonder why some people don't want to come to this, why they don't want to come or stay in this community. I won't cite those reports, but let's make sure that this is not a tale of two cities, that it continues not to be a tale of two cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and your work. Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening once again. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of the city, but more importantly, a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Holy Scripture says, "This act does the Lord hate. This act is an abomination unto him, hands that shed innocent blood." I want to make it clear, I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not an independent. I vote according to the Holy Scriptures. That is my political party, if you will. One day, the Lord's going to rule and reign on this earth, the whole earth, out of Jerusalem, and I hope all of you are on the side he's on. You can be by accepting him as your Lord and Savior today. With the election season approaching, I would appeal to everyone that's under the sound of my voice. If you are being pressured not to speak up for the unborn because of your political party or because you may feel you can't win your election, I would ask you, what's more important, saving babies' lives and pleasing the almighty Lord God or winning an election? To use the slaughter of innocent children to win an election is demonic, whatever party you might be. I heard of a local Democratic politician, no one on this body, recently saying, quote, "I cannot run as pro-life. If I did, my party's support would stop." And again, quoting some notable politicians. We've heard a lot about genocide tonight. There's a genocide going on at 425 East Cherry, within a couple of miles of where we're standing and sitting right now. My son alluded to it. Where they're ripping babies apart limb by limb, in their mother's wombs and now outside of the wombs. Nancy Pelosi, again, I quote these people because they've quoted these publicly. It's not slander. April 30, "If we win, we will kill the filibuster and legalize abortion or murder up to birth nationwide." She declared some time ago that abortion, quote, "is our religion." Nancy Pelosi. We now have people in Lansing passing laws to make it even more easy to murder babies and for young women to do this. If, if you vote for someone who is for pro-death or if you receive money as a politician, you are an accomplice to murder, according to God's word.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Antonia. I'm from Grand Rapids. I also really don't like politicians that want death, but I'm talking about the people that are actually being murdered in Gaza right now and the people in Grand Rapids who have protested that very real death happening, that genocide, whether or not you want to call it that, it is a genocide, like by all definitions. So on the 15th, people went out to protest that, to protest the death and destruction happening, and four people got arrested for it. And I think those charges need to be dropped. And I'm sure you've heard many, many words on that this evening and I want to be one more person adding to that, that the charges need to be dropped. I don't think you want your legacy here to be arresting protesters for protesting genocide. That should not be the Grand Rapids legacy. That should not be the legacy anywhere. We need to stop this and we've asked you for that. And that's what I want to say here today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Eileen. I'm from the 2nd Ward of Grand Rapids. I'm also here to speak on the arrest of the pro-Palestinian protesters last week and I'm hoping I can cite some Michigan legal code that can clarify situations like this going forward where what I'm assuming happened is people were in the street and were told to leave the street and did so ultimately. And so in Michigan law, a person shall not block, obstruct, impede, or interfere with traffic with his or her person. This is MCL 257.676B1. And then 257.676B4 describes this as a civil infraction. This is Michigan law, which Grand Rapids law does not have the legal authority to super insee, I'm sorry, super inseed? I don't actually, thank you, supersede. So civil infractions don't carry jail time in Michigan. And if someone suspects that they are going to be unlawfully arrested, they may resist this unlawful arrest and civil infractions do not carry jail time. If someone suspects they are being placed under arrest, for example, being in the street, they are within their rights to resist that. So hopefully, we can go forward as there is a wrongful imprisonment compensation act in Michigan wherein people can receive compensation in the amount of, what have we got here? Ah, I've got plenty of time. Hang on one sec. Um...
...more than the tons and downs of the cost during the case trial.
All right, it's her turn to speak.
The total amount awarded can be $50,000 per year of imprisonment, which can be applied per day. So someone would simply need to do a calculation of, for example, three or four out of 365 times 50,000 and try and seek compensation for their wrongful imprisonment. So hopefully, going forward, if people are in the street, that we don't appreciate being in the street and they end up leaving the street after a police officer tells them to leave the street, we don't have to see them going into any police cars or into any jails. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Elise Gooding. I am here to add support to dropping the charges against the people that were wrongfully detained. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Al Willis. I am a resident of the 3rd Ward and also a candidate for City Commissioner, 3rd Ward. The, let me just start by saying, my heart is heavy tonight. My heart is heavy because I hear yet another thing that is dividing our community. For me to speak on either side of the issue, I want to say a quote, and that was by Thomas Aquinas, and he said, "If the aim of the captain was to preserve the ship, he would never leave port." And so me in this run for City Commission is not to preserve myself and I don't think that any of you all on this dais are here to preserve yourselves, but I do think that we have a culture in the country right now of being disconnected. We, we're all seeking some type of power or position, whether we be looking for a raise at our job or whether we're looking to, for that next level of governmental office. And so, and I think that's okay and I think it's a good thing, but we have to be careful that we don't forget the reasons why we're doing that and the reason, and the people who we're trying to represent and make the path easier for that are coming behind us. And so what I'm encouraging is, and what I'm calling for, is a fight for unity. The other day, one of the mayoral candidates, and I won't say who, but came up to me and picked a fight because my button says "fighting for unity." And he said, "Well, if somebody, if somebody's fighting, then somebody has to win and somebody has to lose." And I said, "Correct. The loss hopefully comes to division, right? We have to come back together." I've also been called too optimistic by, by one of my opponents, but I think that if nobody's optimistic, then what's the alternative we have? To all be negative, to sit back and to just disconnect with each other? That's what happened in 2020. That's why our, our city was bombarded. Those weren't peaceful protesters that did that. I was down there peacefully protesting. The next day, I went and I talked to Chief Eric Payne at that time because we have to understand that just because we disagree on certain issues, doesn't mean that we just write each other off. That doesn't mean that we just say, "I disagree with you on everything because I disagree with you on this issue." And we need leaders who are going to flag bear in this city and around the, and around the world, honestly, but our country specifically right now. We are in a very, very scary time. I have kids growing up in this city and I'm, and there's other parents in this room tonight and hopefully those that are listening online. And so we have to stand up. We have to do what we believe in our heart, but we have to be careful about how we exercise our rights because the pursuit of happiness is also a right. And that says that we have the right to do what we want to do that makes us happy so long as it doesn't infringe on the, on the rights of other people. And that's what I'm seeing a lot of happening in our country and in our city. So I just call for everybody in this room. Like I said, maybe I'm the over-optimist guy, but I'll continue to be the flag bearer for optimism in our city, in our state, and in our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. All right, with that, I will close public comment and I'll turn to my colleagues, Commissioner Knight. Start down here by, with you. All right, Commissioner, Commissioner Yossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all, colleagues, for your work on the budget as well. We had a number of sessions since April and asked a lot of different questions, not only about what we were going to do the next year, but really looking out to the next five years as we know some of our federal money is going away, as we look at how do we leverage the different grants or opportunities that might exist at both our state and federal level. And so many thanks again to those who'll be working to get that, to get that ready to go for our July 1 start date. I did, I, I don't have many comments tonight, but I did want to share something that was shared to me from the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition. I'm not able to go to this, but it was shared at our CNA Crested Neighborhood Breakfast, Commissioner Knight. Commissioner Knight and I had the chance to go to that and to connect with a number of neighbors. Many, due to their work, were able to come to the breakfast for free this year. So kudos to Greg Hampshire and the team there to make that happen. It was a very large event. It was cold, but it was well-attended. But I did say that I would share this. So on Saturday, June 1st, there is, the Climate Coalition is going to have a film and discussion called "The Green Amendment." There's, it's been told there's going to have some great speakers who are in this film. And they like to invite people for film and discussion as they talk about a number of issues related to our climate and our environment. So just wanted to take my point of privilege today and remind us all about that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner, I'm pretty.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, colleagues, for a long day together, productive day. Thank you, everyone who chose to speak tonight. I've said before, you know, I would be willing to pass some sort of resolution to recognize what's going on in the world and to use our voice if others are willing to join me on that. But tonight I heard a lot of questions around peaceful protesting, and I'm wondering if City Manager, others, might have some comments that you might be able to offer to the public on that as a topic. That's the extent of my comments and my questions this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. Deputy City Clerk? Deputy City Attorney?
I'll try to reserve any comments for the City Manager in response to the peaceful protest. But I will say there are resources out there. There are credible resources out there. I always caution legal advice coming from those that are not as familiar with the city charter rules and laws and how they interact with state laws. There are lawyers, there are advocacy groups like the ACLU that have resources out there for peaceful protest rules and responsibilities. Our Office of Oversight and Public Accountability has also sponsored and held discussion forums around what the rules are in the city of Grand Rapids. So we're happy to engage in that conversation within the City Attorney's Office too on a more kind of specific basis. But those are a couple of reactions that come to mind.
Thank you. Thank you. Do not interrupt him. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your work today on the numerous items you had before you, and particularly the city budget. And I do want to also echo my appreciation to the staff who worked to help develop the proposal. And also, this past weekend, I want to recognize our Office of Equity and Engagement for the work they did in the Neighborhood Summit. And we had over almost 400 or so residents engaged in day-long activity related to empowering neighborhoods and communities. So thank you for that work. Just a couple of thoughts, and I can't speak regarding specifics of the case because I don't have all the facts. But in general, I think we all preserve, want to preserve the First Amendment right in many respects, and that includes even your right to come and petition your local government here tonight. And so the freedom of speech is something that I value personally. Obviously, all the great people who have liberated our country, have fought for liberation, now even making opportunity for this possible for me to sit here today. I would say a couple of things regarding the concerns that have been expressed, the complaints that have been expressed around a couple of demonstrations. As a matter of fact, I heard from one of the persons that were directly arrested very recently. One, I think we have events all around the city all the time. We had a large race a couple of weeks ago, 25,000 people, permitted event. And we had police presence all along the event to ensure the peace and protection of the participants, of the race, and other people. I think when it comes to freedom of speech and demonstrators, I think our offices also are there to protect the peace of the participants and other people around there. The best way to ensure that right is if you want to overtake the right-of-way of the streets, our Special Events Office will work with you to make sure the event route is permitted, to give you approved passage to the street right-of-way to make sure that we can plan for any traffic impediments. Whenever there is not a planned route or a permitted event, that's where there is, could be conflict, both with the right-of-way and with those who uphold the law and the right-of-way of the police officers specifically. So we hope, I haven't had a chance to talk to our police chief or our Director of Oversight in detail, but I did ask this evening in terms of whenever there's a complaint about police officers' behavior, we have processes in place. Now, you certainly have a right to petition the elected officials here, but this is not the beginning, in terms of procedurally, the end of the process. They won't make decisions here. We invite you to, as Deputy City Attorney said, to, you can file a complaint either with the Police Department directly, Internal Affairs, or if you're uncomfortable filing a complaint with the Internal Affairs, our Office of Oversight and Public Engagement, Mr. Davis, if you'll raise your hand, can also assist who is not in the Police Department filing a complaint. And I have asked, has any complaint been filed internally for either event? I think there are a couple of events. The May 15 Celebration of Nakba, and there was another event, I believe I heard weeks ago. And as far as I'm aware, there has not been a complaint filed with the Police Department or the Office of Oversight. So those who wish to, you may wish to do it that way, or you may...
Let him speak. Let him speak.
Those who wish to may do it that way, or you can do it procedurally in the courts. It's your option. And so I will conclude my remarks with those comments.
Let him speak.
And also, again, there's facts to this that, like Deputy City Attorney, we just don't have all the facts at this point, but those are the procedural processes.
All right, with that, we adjourned.